Good evening, seeing that it is seven o'clock, we will call tonight's Tuesday, December 18, 2018, meeting of the Noblesville Common Council to order. Welcome, if you're able to stand, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. O'Connor, would you lead us?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Eyre.
Present.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Jensen.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Moving on to approval of the minutes for the December 4, 2018, meeting by the Noblesville Common Council. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Nine to zero, thank you very much. Approval of tonight's agenda, Ms. Wiles.
Mr. President, I would make the motion to amend the agenda to postpone previously discussed ordinance number 46-11-18 and 47-11-18 to our January 15 meeting. And then I would also amend the agenda to move miscellaneous item number two to be presented before new ordinance for discussion number 54-12-18, as well as moving new ordinance for discussion number 56-12-18 to the top of all the new ordinances for discussion.
There's been a motion to amend, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, right hand. Nine to zero again, thank you very much. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present? I have none on the sheets filled out in front of me, but if you'd like to speak, please just visit the door, outside the north door, there are sheets you can fill out and hand them to the clerk, and we will be glad to hear from you at that point in time. So at this point in time, we'll move on to the Mayor's Report to Council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Been quite busy. The Fire Department did have a ceremony to induct or put into service a new ladder truck, and that was rather exciting, they watered it down, and it's a tradition, a lifelong, or a fire service long, a tradition of that. Learned a lot about that, it was very interesting, and retired, of course, the old truck. We had our holiday lunch with the Chamber, had a couple ribbon cuttings, HTC, out at the Town Center, and first family chiropractic. The lights over Seminary, I might have mentioned those last time, but if you haven't been by, they are beautiful. And again, congratulations to collaborating with us, Main Street Preservation Alliance. But Aaron Head of our office was kind of the dreamer on that, did a lot of the work, but it's beautiful. Did have in this room, on the 8th of December, a celebration and proclamation and remembrance of Pearl Harbor Day. A Perfecto Spectrum, if you don't know Perfecto, they've been, well, they've celebrated their 50th year here in the city. They produce 800,000 aquariums a year out of this, I don't want to say little plant, it's a lot of buildings, but by the plant in Noblesville, it's one of six or seven that they have worldwide. But they supply about one-third of all the aquariums sold, so one of those companies in the city that we sometimes don't know a whole lot about, and yet it's another global company we have in the city. Coming up, on the 20th, ribbon cutting at Crewe Car Wash, and cutting of, ribbon cutting at Pies and Pints. That is not pies, like apple pies, it's like pizza pies and pints of beer, I understand, in the Town Center. Judge Nation is retiring, has an open house on the 20th, and the city will be closed the 24th and the 25th, obviously in observance of Christmas. Council organizational meeting on the 7th of January, and basically that's it for me. Are there any questions of me?
Questions to the Mayor, Mr. Eyre.
I know it was cold, and I left a little early. Do you know who won the tree decorating contest at the Seminary Park?
I do not know.
I do.
The Planning Park.
Planning Park, okay, because.
The Grinch.
Okay.
The Grinch stole Christmas, I mean.
Well, again, the winner certainly let us know who it was.
Yes, I see that. I know Jack Martin was twisting a lot of arms out there.
There were a lot of really cool trees, and you're right, I, anyway. We had competition amongst the departments, as well as some sponsors, certainly from the business world, so it was great.
I think it's going to be a wonderful new tradition.
Yes.
I think it's going to be a wonderful new tradition.
Oh, yes, and it is, and I think it is going to be wonderful. Thank you.
And also, last evening, my wife and I just happened to be at the Town Center, and I drove by Pies and Pints, so we had to go in. I didn't partake of a pint, but we did have a very good meal there, so.
Pie.
No, we had, actually, sandwiches.
Whatever, yeah.
But it was good, and a really nice place, so.
Well, this HTC is a clothing deal right across the street, and a young couple, we, they've already opened up four stores, we're the fourth store. So, you know, again, it's a growing business, which we like all businesses, thank you. Thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
Appreciate it. Moving on to Council Committee Reports. Mr. Taylor.
I have one seating for, we had a downtown parking task force meeting yesterday. Four topics of discussion was the Levison Parking Garage, replace parking enforcement scooter, replace outdated meters, and create a communication outreach. I won't talk on topic number one, because it's on our agenda for tonight, but the enforcement, the Noblesville Police Scooter has not been used for parking enforcement, for it's been out of service for some quite time, and rather than replace the scooter, it is more cost-effective and efficient to replace the scooter with a hybrid automobile, software, and camera package that can scan vehicle license plates to enforce two-hour time limits and metered parking violations. The parking meters, believe it or not, were put in in 1948.
Ooh.
1948. They're 70 years old, but.
Totally depreciated.
While these meters were removed from the square, they still exist in many of the city's surface parking lots, but can no longer be maintained due to their age and lack of parts and repairs. The city recommends removing the old meters and installing a new parking kiosk system with that latest technology that allows for credit card and coin payment, mobile app access and payment by any parking, and payment for any parking tickets. Kiosks will be placed in the downtown lots where it is convenient for drivers to enter their license plate and submit payment, or simply use the mobile app. Free parking would still be available on the streets, and these lots would be free during the evenings and weekends, just as they are now, the same with the, with the new Levison Parking Garage. The communications, as we look for the future, the city would work with the Noblesville Chamber, Noblesville Main Street, Downtown Merchants, and its vendors to create a robust communication and outreach program. And for those businesses that do not subsidize their employees' parking costs, there could be some free options available outside of square that could be suggested and promoted by the communications and outreach initiatives. So, the Parking Task Force looks forward to continuing collaboration with the downtown, with the Downtown City and Downtown District Committee. Together, we can enhance and improve our downtown with a better parking experience for all.
Questions to Mr. Taylor? Seeing none, additional Council Committee Reports. Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met December 13. We had an executive session, followed by conversation on the Levison Project, which is on the agenda this evening. That project and the associated resolutions and ordinances come to you with a favorable recommendation from Finance. We talked about the 1782 notice from DLGF, I'm not sure what the origination of 1782 is, but that's the number they use for their budget evaluation, and there were two things that came up. One was related to MVH, the other was a parks fund, and because we haven't spent all the money in those funds in 2018, the DLGF decided to reduce the levies in the MVH to $200,000 and parks $100,000. Now, our option is to reappropriate those in 19, if we need to do so. Mr. Spalding is likely to appeal that, but that's really, it's primarily because we didn't do, as Mr. Spalding called it, the karaoke dance, or before the budget was submitted, in other words, we didn't go ahead and tell the DLGF that we weren't going to spend those dollars, so therefore they reduced the levies. But at the end of the day, it's really kind of a non-event, but I think everyone should know that that action took place, everything else was approved as it was submitted. We talked about Mr. Reuters' contract extension for next year with a 1.7% increase. I think the committee feels that his services are still something that we need, although as we move down the path with more sophisticated accounting procedures, Mike's rule is probably going to evolve into something a little different, but at least going into next year, we were supportive of renewing that contract, but that's small increase. We talked about the transfer resolutions, which are on the agenda, so I won't get into those with any detail. Jackie Thompson's working on a travel reimbursement policy, and that probably get wrapped up in the not-too-distant future. And TIF fund reconciliation is becoming more of a pressing issue for Mr. Spalding for year-round accounting purposes, and once we've got some of that data wrapped up, we'll bring policy analytics in, so they can start doing their analysis for us. And, other than that, the claims come with a favorable recommendation, and that was some and substance of the meeting.
Additional questions of Mr. O'Connor? Seeing none, additional Committee Reports. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of claims, have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine to zero, thank you very much. Moving right along with tonight's agenda, the previously discussed ordinances, 49-12-18. Council to consider ordinance 49-12-18, and ordinance amending ordinance 23-6-14 for the Crossing Plan Development regarding text amendments allowing LED building lighting for the St. Vincent Neighborhood Hospital at 9460 East 146th Street. Ms. Yelton, good evening.
Good evening. As you may recall, at the last meeting, there was a request to suspend the rules, and the council did not do that. This was continued to give everybody an opportunity to go by and look at the lighting that currently exists on this building. Again, it is part of the Crossing Plan Development. Any lighting like that on the building is considered signage by our definition. It was not approved as signage, and so therefore they're coming back to attempt to amend the plan. Again, it is LED lighting, it is basically a strip light that is on the north and south side of the building, and with that, I will ask if you have any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Yelton? Mr. Boyce, do you have any comments?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay.
I did observe the lights.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I wanted everybody to see it.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
You have to read it. It's not enough. I'll second, believe it or not, hold on.
Motion to approve, sorry, Evelyn. Motion to approve ordinance 49-12-18, amending ordinance 23-6-14.
Boyce?
For a second.
All right, it's been moved in second, the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Nine, zero, the ordinance, oh, Mr. Jensen.
I also vote ayes.
Sure. Nine, zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Easily forgettable, thank you very much. Moving on, previously discussed ordinance 50-12-18. Council to consider ordinance 50-12-18, and ordinance amending ordinance 06-1-06 for the Promenade Plan Development regarding text amendments allowing LED building lighting for the St. Vincent Neighborhood Hospital at 6139 Promenade Shops Boulevard. Ms. Yelton.
Again, this was a request that was asked for suspension of the rules, and again, it was denied, so they're back again this time, again, requesting approval. It did come to you with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. Again, this is the same type of lighting that is on this building, it is the same building, it's just located on the west side of the city.
Right. Additional questions of Ms. Yelton?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I move to approve ordinance 50-12-18.
Second.
Moved in second, the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Nine, zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you very much, thank you, Ms. Yelton, appreciate that. Moving right along to previously discussed ordinances, Madam Clerk, can I take the next two together?
To discuss them.
Yes, to discuss them, thank you. Previously discussed ordinance 51-12-18, council to consider ordinance 51-12-18, an ordinance concerning an additional appropriation of the promotional fund, and previously discussed ordinance 52-12-18, council to consider ordinance 52-12-18, an ordinance concerning an appropriation reduction in the general fund. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, Controller, and yes, you do have before you two ordinances, they really represent a two-step process to do effectively a single action, but you have to work through the process because of the way municipal finance laws are structured, and this is simply an adjustment that was discussed at the previous meeting, so this is the second time around, but again, it's around a lot of the revision to our, our chart of accounts, establishment of a promotional fund, and trying to focus on ensuring that expenses are, are posted to the, to the, to the proper place, and then moving budget authority to that proper place, and so what this basically accomplishes is, it's taking about, it's taking $10,000 from the general fund, moving it to promote the promotional fund, so it's fiscally neutral for the city, but you have to do it in a two-ordinance process.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Spalding? Seeing none, these two ordinances are eligible for a public hearing this evening, so at this point in time, we will open the public hearing for ordinance 51-12-18 and 52-12-18.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Seeing no one from the public coming forward to discuss either ordinance, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, to close the public hearing, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Nine to zero, great. So at this point in time, we will take a motion for ordinance 51-12-18.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I would move that we approve ordinance number 51-12-18.
Second.
Moved in second, the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Nine, zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you very much. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion for 52-12-18.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number 52-12-18.
Second.
Moved in second, the clerk will call the roll.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Nine, zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Moving along to new ordinance for discussion this evening, ordinance 56-12-18. Council to consider ordinance 56-12-18, and ordinance updating Chapter 78 traffic schedules in the City of Noblesville Code of Ordinances.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Moved in second, and good evening, Mr. Hellman.
Good evening. Before you, it was an ordinance for various updates to Chapter 78 of the city's traffic code. The list was compiled and recommended by members of the Traffic Committee. The prohibition of parking on Maryland and Promise Road is to stop semi-trailers from parking there overnight. We're currently having an issue of that.
Thank you, Mr. Hellman.
You are welcome. The other item is, in front of North Elementary School on North 10th Street, they were trying a new procedure for drop-off and pickup that was passed previously. They're sending that ordinance to prohibit the parking on the front. So I would request that you waive the rules and pass the ordinance on the first reading.
Good question regarding the second piece, I'm assuming the schools have been, were involved in that, and they're the ones who asked to rescind, to rescind that?
Yeah, they're the ones who kind of, they made the initial request to have it in there, they just had some concerns, and they were just, it was a trial basis.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions of Mr. Hellman? Mr. Taylor?
I might add that I think one reason why they've done it is they ran into problems on Harrison Street with east and west traffic pretty much blocking the whole road when it's time for school to get out. I've had several complaints on that, so I'm glad to see this come forward.
Additional comments or questions? There has been a request to waive the rules and pass this on first reading, do I have a motion to approve that request?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'll make the motion to approve, waive the rules, and pass ordinance 56-12-18 on first reading.
Second.
Moved in second to waive the rules, all those in favor of waiving the rules, please raise your right hand. Thank you much, do we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Mr. President.
Mr. Eyre.
I move to approve ordinance 56-12-18.
Second.
It's been moved in second, the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Nine, aye, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Hellman, appreciate it. Moving along with new ordinances this evening, 53-12-18. Council to consider ordinance 53-12-18, and ordinance amending chapters, nope, sorry. I apologize about that. Hold on, oh, there we go, 30 seconds, I apologize. A new ordinance 36-10-18A. Council to consider ordinance 36-10-18A, and ordinance amending ordinance 36-10-18, 2019 salary ordinance for employees and appointed officials.
Moved into the second.
Moved in second, and good evening, Mr. Cook, and apologize for trying to rush through that.
Not a problem at all. Good evening, Mr. President and members of council. So you have the salary ordinance in front of you, the only change that we're requesting be made tonight would be on the last page, Section 8, which has to do with fire department personnel who are acting in capacity in certain merit positions, that they receive a $1 more per hour rate serving in that, in those various roles. And this item is part of our agreement that I'll be bringing up later on between the City of Noblesville and Local Fire Fighters Association 4416, which was approved by the Board of Works earlier this morning, and this, these amounts for these positions have already been previously budgeted.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, questions of Mr. Cook?
Just a comment, Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
The Finance Committee did review this at our last meeting and was supportive of the action.
Thank you, additional comments, Mr. Hampton?
Just real quickly, I think we talked, we discussed, I know we discussed this in Finance, we talked about what the total, what this $1 more would be, was it roughly $10,000 for the year, is what we estimated?
It was $24 a day, with that total, let's see, about $10,000 a year, is that what you had asked?
Yes.
I believe that calculates, yes.
So that number's accurate, okay, that's all.
And then it had already been budgeted for 2019.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay, thank you.
Additional comments, Ms. Wiles?
Is there a request to suspend the rules and pass this on?
Yes, there would be a request to. Yes, there would be a request to suspend the rules. Thank you. So therefore I would make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 36-10-18A on first reading.
Second.
It's moved in second. And to suspend the rules and pass on first reading, all those in favor of suspending the rules, please raise your right hand. Nine to zero. Do we have a motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'd move that we approve ordinance 36-10-18A. Second.
It's been moved in second. The clerk will call a roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Nine aye, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Appreciate it. Now we'll go on to new ordinance for discussion, 53-12-18, counsel to consider ordinance 53-12-18, an ordinance amending chapters 30 through 34 of the Code of Ordinances.
Motion to introduce, second.
Moved in second. Clerk, please.
Good evening.
Are you speaking to your microphone?
I'm working.
Goes around, comes around.
Every chance you can.
It's too easy.
That's fair enough. This is a project I've been working on most of the year. I hired an attorney, Jeanette Kassebaum, to help me draft this ordinance. This has to do with updating administrative sections of our city code. We changed from a third-class city to a second-class city, and I don't want to say that the code was neglected over the years. I think it just didn't have anybody assigned to it to watch it, and people were busy. But many years have passed, and things have gotten outdated, so this is just bringing it up to our present practices, bringing it up in cases where state code changed, but our city code didn't, and so bringing those together. Certainly, there will be room for more revisions in the future, but it's a start. Jeanette Kassebaum is here, and I believe she wanted to speak for a moment, if we could, and both of us are available to answer any questions you might have.
Kassebaum? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jeanette Kassebaum. I'm an attorney in Fishers, and I'm at 11614 Maple Street in Fishers. Good evening, Mr. President and council members. It's an honor to work on this project, and I believe a memo was provided to you that kind of summarized those changes. I did have one tiny amendment. I think in revisions and reversions and repagination, your ex officio member on your parks board got left out, and I would like to propose that we, if you pass it, that that be back in, and I apologize for that oversight.
Questions of Ms. Kassebaum? Comments? Madam Clerk, did you want to pass this on?
If we could pass it on first reading, that would be very helpful. It would allow me to get it into the hard copies of our code for next year.
And with your amendment, with your ex officio member.
First, we probably need to take a motion to amend.
So, Mr. President?
Somebody just started talking. Is that all right?
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass new ordinance 53-12-18 on first reading, as amended.
It's been moved in second to waive the rules. All those in favor of waiving the rules, please raise your right hand. Nine to zero. Now we'll take a motion. Motion to amend it.
So, Mr. President, I would make a motion that we amend ordinance number 53-12-18 to include the ex officio member of the park board.
Second.
It's been moved in second to amend. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Nine to zero. Now do we have a motion to approve as amended?
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 53-12-18 as amended.
I'll second that. It's been moved in second. Clerk, call a roll.
I'm so proud. Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Nine aye, the ordinance is adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move along to miscellaneous number two. Counsel to consider resolution RC-26-18, a preliminary resolution approving, one, a declaratory resolution and redevelopment plan of the City of Noblesville Redevelopment Commission, establishing the Noblesville-Levinson Redevelopment Area Number One, which declaratory resolution also removes certain property from the Noblesville Redevelopment Area, and, two, the order of the City of Noblesville Plan Commission related thereto. Mr. Murray, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Eyre? I'm sorry.
I'd like to declare, as I have previously on this project, a conflict of interest, and therefore we'll be abstaining from any conversation or discussion regarding it.
Mr. Eyre? Mr. Murray?
Good evening, President Jensen, members of the council, for the record. My name's Andrew Murray. I'm with the Economic Development Department. Before you this evening is a resolution that is one of multiple statutory steps in creating a new redevelopment area or allocation area, which is commonly referred to as a TIF district, specifically for the mixed-use Levinson Project proposed in our downtown. Give you a little background, the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission met on December 6th, where they passed the declaratory resolution, which is attached to the resolution before you as Exhibit A. That resolution, as President Jensen just mentioned, it did two things. It removes the project area from the current downtown Noblesville TIF, and then takes those project area parcels and creates a new redevelopment TIF area, which in the resolution is known as the Noblesville-Levinson Redevelopment Area. The purpose for creating this new TIF area is to capture the tax increment that will be pledged to the bonds, which we will discuss next on your agenda. It also prevents any further pledges in the existing downtown TIF area. Procedurally speaking, this item comes to you after being approved by the Redevelopment Commission, as well as the Plan Commission. And as Councilman O'Connor mentioned, this comes to you with a favorable recommendation from your, this council's Finance Committee. And if all goes to plan tonight, it'll return to the Redevelopment Commission to be confirmed, where they will hold the required statutory public hearing. With that, I'll stop there and request that this item, before you, be approved this evening. And I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions of Mr. Murray? Am I eligible for vote this evening, or is it? Yes, that's what I thought. Okay, that's what I thought. Without any additional questions, do we have a motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'll move that we approve resolution RC-26-18.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Abstentions? Eight with one abstention. Thank you very much. Now we'll jump back to new ordinances, 54-12-18. Counsel to consider ordinance 54-12-18, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a lease among the Noblesville Community Development Corporation, ELISER, and the City of Noblesville Redevelopment Commission, and Levinson Noblesville LLC, as LEVSEES, and pledging local income tax revenue to the City of Noblesville Redevelopment Commission for the payment of the lease rentals under such lease.
Motion to introduce, second.
It's been moved in second. And Mr. Murray, thank you.
Thank you, President Jensen, members of the council, again, Andrew Murray, Economic Development. Before you this evening is an ordinance necessary in order to move forward with bond financing pursuant to the Levinson Project Agreement approved by this council earlier this year. The bond proceeds that, you know, this will provide the, for the city's share of the cost of that project. The proposed financing for this project is a lease rental bond financing, which means that the debt service payment on these bonds will be made in the form of a lease rental payment pursuant to the lease agreement that is attached to the ordinance before you as Exhibit A. The parties, as you'll note in that agreement, are the Noblesville Community Development Corporation, which is a separate 501(c)(3) organization. They are the lessor. They will also be the owner of the asset, the public garage, in this project. And then the co-LEVSEES are the developer, and the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission, the developer is a party because they will be improving the lease premise on our behalf, constructing the garage component. And then the Redevelopment Commission is a party to the agreement, as they will be making these lease rental payments to the Noblesville CDC. The second component to this ordinance before you is how we will make those lease rental payments, and the answer to that is those payments will be made from the tax increment generated from the project, and to the extent that that revenue does not cover the annual debt service amount, then we will utilize a local income tax to cover that annual debt service lease rental payment. So to summarize, again, this ordinance before you approves the lease agreement attached as Exhibit A, as well as approves the pledge of local income taxes to make debt service payments to the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission. Procedurally speaking, this ordinance, again, is for introduction only, and will be back before this council for second reading in January. This ordinance comes to you with a favorable recommendation from this council's Finance Committee. I want to point out, in the audience with us is Mr. Dennis Otten, partner with Boaz McKinney and Evans, also bond counsel on this transaction. If you guys have any questions at this time, he and I can answer them now.
Some questions of Mr. Murray? None, thank you very much. We'll see you back in a couple weeks, and we'll move right along here this evening. To new ordinance for discussion, 55-12-18, counsel to consider ordinance 55-12-18, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Noblesville, Indiana taxable economic development revenue bond, Series 2019 Levinson Project, and the lending of the proceeds thereto to the Noblesville Community Development Corporation, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Motion to introduce, second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Murray, keep going.
Thank you, President Jensen, members of council, Andrew Murray, Economic Development, for the record. Again, this is an ordinance necessary in order to move forward with bond financing for the Levinson Project. Specifically, and simply put, this authorizes the issuance of taxable economic development lease rental bonds. That, again, will provide funds necessary to the city to contribute its share of the cost to the project. As you'll note, as proposed and written in the ordinance, the paramount for the issuance is not to exceed 19.1 million, which includes four components. Number one is the cost of the project, which is, as I mentioned, primarily the garage component, as well as a portion going towards the mixed-use structure and site improvements. The second component is funding a reserve fund for the bonds. The third component is cost for capitalized interest on the bonds, and then the final component is the cost of issuance for the bonds. One other point that I want to make you aware, the paramount could reduce to 17.9, or, I'm sorry, 17.8 million in the event that we, as the city, with the advice and recommendation of our Controller, Mr. Jeff Spalding, and our financial advisor's recommendation, determine that when we go to sell these bonds on the open market, it's not necessary to fund a cash reserve. And so until that point, we will not know that, but if we do decide that, it could reduce the paramount to 17.8 million dollars. Procedurally speaking, again, this is for introduction. It'll be back before you for second reading in January. It comes to you with a favorable recommendation from your Finance Committee, and I'll conclude there and answer any questions that you have.
Additional questions of Mr. Murray? None, thank you very much. See you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along with tonight's agenda, to the proposed development presentation. Number one, counsel to consider introductory information for the proposed Levinson Project located adjacent to Maple Street between 8th and 9th Street. Ms. Yelton? Good evening.
Good evening again. Again, this is the Levinson Project that obviously we've been having a lot of discussion on. It is the first downtown mixed-use project that we will have basically presented to the council and the Plan Commission since the adoption of those new standards within our Unified Development Ordinance. A downtown mixed-use project is one that provides residential units above some type of a commercial use, whether it be office or, you know, retail. That's what meets the definition of a mixed-use building. The council will review this layout of the architecture, creating, and thus ultimately, after it goes to the Plan Commission, will create what is known as the downtown mixed-use overlay district for this property, if they so desire. The actual civil designs of this project will be basically vetted through the Technical Advisory Committee, so anything having to do with infrastructure, you know, that type of stuff will be approved by the Technical Advisory Committee. The last buildings that we had constructed in the downtown area basically have been City Hall and the Judicial Center. Those have been the last two buildings. City Hall's been here for 11 years. The Judicial Center down there has been there a lot longer than that. Dave Kroll with Ratio Architects is present this evening to discuss his findings regarding the condition assessment, and then Shelby Brown with Rebar Development will provide additional details on this project. And at this point, I will turn it over to Dave.
Good evening. My name's David Kroll. I'm with Ratio Architects, doing business at 101 South Pennsylvania Street in downtown Indianapolis. As Joyce Ann said, Ratio was hired to do an architectural, historical, and existing condition assessment on the three buildings at the corner of Maple and 9th Street. Aerial views, the building, the on the right, or, excuse me, the left-hand image is circled in red, and then on the right-hand side, we've divided these up into the three buildings. We've given the building that faces onto 9th Street, that addresses 77 and 97, South 9th Street. There's a garage that's immediately west of that, and then there's another building at 850 Maple Street. We conducted two site visits during the month of September, one on September 5th and one on September 18th. Steve Cook and Joyce Ann were present and helped us go through the building. Steve Holt was very gracious, as was Brian with his space. We went through all the spaces in the building, went in the basement, poked up some of the ceilings, walked around on the outside, and took a pretty good visual observation of the building. A number of photographs were taken as well. I apologize for my cropping ability here. The maps don't quite match up. Catherine Street is now 9th Street, but 1892 Sandborne map, these are maps put out by the Sandborne Fire Insurance Company to indicate fire insurance risks for buildings throughout the United States. The color coding, yellow means it's wood frame structure, red means it's masonry structure, green is stone and metal, and there's all sorts of little logos and signals and symbols on there. But the 1892 Sandborne map shows the corner of Wiltshire, which is Maple Avenue, and Catherine Street, which is 9th Street, and a large livery building and a residential building. The gas boom happened, lots of construction throughout Noblesville, even your own seal here has the flambeaus on it. So there's a lot of development, and between 1892 and 1922, the Opera House is built, the Houston Hotel is built, and the buildings in question are at the southeast corner of Maple and 9th Street. Some historic photographs we're able to find, oldest one is 1898, circa 1898, the building we're guessing was built around 1896, and the building is kind of tucked behind that bicycle sign, and what I want to point out, especially on that photo, is the pediment, the triangular shape that was on the middle bay of the building. In 1915, the building was sold from the grocery store to the Home Telephone Company, and they made some facade renovations. The pediment, the peak in the middle part of the building was removed at that time, as was a lot of masonry work on the front of the building that I'll get to later on. The big building you see there next to it is the Opera House. The photo up in the upper right-hand corner, 1935, it shows the pediment had been removed. It's a flat top going across all three bays of the building. 1959, the photo in the middle there shows the Opera House being demolished, and what's important about that is the north wall of these buildings is now an exposed party wall from 1959 to today. 1972, the Hyatt Realty was in the southern portion of the building and put the little gabled front penti, kind of a western-style storefront on the southern bay of the building. And then Steve Holt purchased the building in 1984 and undertook a lot of renovations and improvements to the interior of the building, removed that addition on the front of the building. And then Brian has been in the building since 2003 in the northernmost bay. Using city directories, we've kind of put together a timeline of all the different owners and uses of the buildings. Again, the three buildings, South 9th Street, the garage, and 850 Maple Street are on your left-hand side, kind of running up and down there. 1890s construction, the grocery store was in there until 1915, home telephone operated out of the building until the early 50s, and there's a plaque on the building that talks about that, and then Hyatt Realty and Holt Legal Group up to the present with Brian in the northernmost bay. Indiana conducts architectural surveys, and Hamilton County has been surveyed twice, first in 1978 and then update in 1991. These are surveys undertaken by the State Historic Preservation Office. Buildings and groups of buildings are given opinions and designations of whether they're eligible for listing on the National Register or if they're already listed. The survey that was completed in 1991 led to a National Register nomination for the Noblesville Commercial Historic District. So the Historic District, which includes the courthouse and the sheriff's residence, as well as buildings flanking the courthouse square, and then a couple blocks south on 9th Street, were listed on the National Register in 1991. The three buildings in question, the corner of Maple and 9th Street, were identified as contributing buildings because of their age of construction and their general overall architectural appearance. So in our assessment, again, we were there twice in September, walked around the building. The photograph in the upper left-hand corner shows that party wall that's become exposed since the Opera House was removed. Party wall brick usually is not as fired as hard and is not meant to be exposed, and there's some deterioration along that sidewall. The front of the building, you can see there used to be the pediment in the center bay, it has been removed. The brick in the top portions of the center and the northernmost bay have, those have been re-bricked. They're not the same brick that's in the southern bay, and I've got a close-up of that here in a bit. The bases from the storefronts are new brick masonry. The storefronts themselves have new aluminum panning over some older materials. And then up in the transom areas that are obscured right now because of the awnings, there were Luxor Prism glass transoms, and there are two that are still present. Third one may be there, but it's covered up. The images, the stitched-together images on the bottom there show the south elevation. A lot of window openings have been changed on that side of the building. Some have been filled in, some have been altered, lowered, widened. There's quite a bit of brick modification along that side of the 9th Street building. The little building that's the garage in between is still garage. Steve still parks in there. And then the building that's the farthest to the west has had a complete facade change to it with a garage door and a man door having been removed with a fixed window in place now. So these are close-ups of the storefront. You can see the upper left-hand photograph shows the original brick, 1890s brick. It's a reddish-orange brick, and has the little stone diamond details and the stone coins that run up between the bays. And then the middle bay and the northern bay have a more modern brick, a raked face brick, stronger-faced brick, and it's a little bit of a different color, and that comes from the 1915 remodeling by the Home Telephone Company. Underneath the transoms, you can see in the upper right-hand photograph are some of those Luxor Prism glass transom panels I was talking about. These are small, little four-by-four pieces of glass that usually had some ribbing or some texture to them, a kind of purplish in color, and they allowed light to come through, but they would filter ultraviolet light for storefronts, so you wouldn't have the harsh lights coming in and damaging the merchandise that was on display. Some of those also had operable sections for ventilation. The bottom left-hand corner is the base on the storefronts. Originally, those bases probably would have been wood, but they've deteriorated over the years and been replaced with new masonry. And then images of three-window alterations along the south side of the corner building, original windows being infilled, original windows being enlarged, or original windows being changed in size and reduced. Going inside the basement, there's a basement under the southern portion of the building. It doesn't go all the way up to 9th Street, but there is storage space that Steve uses down there for files. It's relatively dry. He hadn't had a problem with that. Some of the building has been enclosed, what used to be exterior walls, and that's an image of a transom over a door in the upper left-hand corner. And then the photographs down in the bottom left-hand corner are of the west elevation, which also has had a lot of alterations. Doors have been changed in size and location, and you have a concrete block addition at the very northwest portion of that elevation. And then throughout the inside, the insides are very well-maintained, but they've been altered quite a bit from the original layout. Of course, there were three bays there that had interior partition walls between them, and there are now openings between them, or openings have been infilled, dropped ceilings throughout, all new materials. We did poke up some of the ceiling tiles. There are old plaster ceilings in various stages of repair and deterioration. Some plaster is continuing to fall down through the ceiling tiles. So in our conclusion, we're basically saying that the buildings are still considered to be contributing resources to the Historic District by virtue of their date of construction and their location. They've had a moderate level of exterior alterations. Those alterations include the removal of that parapet on the middle bay, changes to the storefront, but it's still kind of obvious where the storefront is, how it was laid out, and how the buildings operated. The insides have been completely altered with no vestige of historic materials or features left, and overall, the buildings appear to be in fair, good condition. They've been well-maintained for the type of use that's been in them. But National Registered Listing on its own does not prohibit demolition. Private individuals and private organizations can do anything they want to a building that's listed on National Register, providing they're using their own money. The only reviews, the only limitations come into play if there are state or federal funds involved in buildings and undertakings on buildings that are on the National Register, or if a building is on a local designation, local Historic District, which you do not have here for these buildings. But Indiana has dozens of communities throughout the state that have local preservation commissions that have identified local Historic Districts. And with the establishment of a local Historic District, you create design guidelines for renovation, for new construction, and what needs to be met for demolition within a Historic District. The four bullet points that I put up there are commonly used in evaluation for demolition, criteria for demolition for buildings within Historic Districts. The first one doesn't come into play here. Buildings are in fair to good condition. There's no threat to public safety. The second one, the buildings have, they're characteristic of the age of construction and the style and the period of significance of the district, but on their own, they really don't have architectural significance. They're background buildings, they're more common buildings, but they do contribute to the district, so this one doesn't count either. I'll skip number three. And number four is the structure cannot be put to any reasonably economically beneficial use, and the buildings have been used throughout their lifetime, and they continue to be used today. So number three is the one that really comes into play. And Historic Commissions, if they determine that the proposed new development has greater significance to the preservation of the overall district and the benefit to the overall community the district is located in, they can allow demolition of historic buildings. They then go into the review of what the new design's going to be like, what the, how it's compatible, and how it blends in with the character of the Historic District. So we issued this report. Steve has copies. I don't know if he's made that available to you all, but I'd be willing to answer any questions you have.
Very much. Questions this evening? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
What time do we, does anyone else want to speak on this topic? Mr. Bowen, would you like to speak?
Name and address for the record. Thank you. Shelby Bowen, 15047 Kirk Road, Noblesville, Indiana. Mr. President, members of the council, really excited to be back before you, what's been several months of us continuing to listen to feedback from the mayor, his staff, and we've met with local community stakeholders, and I think what we're presenting before you tonight and what we've submitted to the planning department is, really includes a lot of the feedback that we received, and we love it, and we think it's going to be an iconic structure here in downtown. Love to just kind of walk through where we started to where we are, and then certainly answer any questions. Got some renderings up here. Some of the feedback, when our architect, he walked downtown with the Noblesville Preservation Alliance, and they pointed out specifically some things that they thought we could incorporate into our design that had some context to downtown Noblesville, and I think you'll see here in the rendering and some of the takeoffs to show that all of that has been included here in ways that I think really make this building look like it belongs, from the arched windows to the base, limestone bands, diamond patterns, cornices, which had a lot of focus. And then, as you see, the fifth floor, that was in response to the desire to, is there a way that we can potentially reduce the perceived scale of the building and how it integrates into downtown and, of course, the square? And I'm proud that we stood here in front of you all in September, and then since, and we said we would collaborate with staff and local stakeholders, and we sat down, spent a lot of time looking at precedent imagery of other downtown buildings that have been around a long time, and then got to work designing, redesigning our original rendering and plan, from windows to limestone to really every detail. I think if you were to look at the original rendering and to where we are today, you can see how far we've come. Couple of things I think are of note to you all, as we have continued to evolve the design and at the same time simultaneously get feedback on cost of construction, we have had to make a few changes. Now there's commercial spaces only along 9th Street. That's a product of a couple of things. One is, as we began to continue to explore the possibility of commercial space on 8th Street, that streetscape's a little bit different and a little busier and feels more like thoroughfare than 9th Street, where we feel like it's going to be a lot of streetscape engagement, and so we really focused our attention on the 9th Street side. And again, you can see some things that we've incorporated here. Indoor/outdoor seating is really important, and a lot of just, really what I would say, really cool streetscape design for folks who are going to enjoy 9th Street and the Levinson. We reduced the size of the second below-grade basement parking. So really, that was a factor of a few things. One is the cost, so the cost per space of that second subfloor basement was detracting from our ability to continue to keep some of the things that make the building look beautiful. So we had to try to reach a happy medium there. Where we've ended up, originally, we were at 337 spaces when I was before you all here in September. Then we reduced that through some tweaks to design and shifts in the structural engineering of the garage to 319 spaces. In our most recent meeting with the mayor and planning and the review panel, one of the things that was very critical to the design of this project was that we have some great interaction with the pedestrian alley, so the north-south alley that meets the square. In our design on the, I think it was the 26th of November, we did not have that stairwell there because it was in an awkward place within the garage. At the time of that design, it was on a ram. And the review panel and design committee and mayor and his staff all agreed that was really an important piece to this project. It should feel like when you park in the garage, you can come out immediately, be downtown, and feel like you're downtown. And so architects and our design team really listened to that feedback and added the third stair within the garage, and really what that produced is this, let's see if I can, really cool entrance and exit, there you go, from that alley to the square, where before you would have been probably looking at parking garage here. And so you can clearly see the significance of adding that, although we did lose a few more parking spaces because this stairwell obviously is for all four levels of parking garage. So what remains is the opportunity to add more spaces in the sub-basement, and something we can explore, because ultimately, I think maybe I can even show you. Sure. Okay, those are the only two we've got with the rendering boards. Ultimately, the second floor below ground, the spaces were just pulled in and reduced. So if we get to a point, once we have final structural engineering, we can do estimates. It would not be that difficult for us to do an estimate and determine, can we include additional spaces within the current budget? As we've said all along, it's an open book, completely transparent delivery, and that's good and bad, right? Because if things are tight, we have to sit down with you all and look at how we can get the most out of the budget and the projects, and we've done that here. But not to say, as we get further along in design and hopefully find some cost efficiencies, potentially we can add in those spaces. It's as simple, really, as extending the basement of the garage. So that's quite a lot. I'm very excited about the work we've put in, but certainly want to hear all of your questions.
Questions or comments for Mr. Bowen? Mr. Johnson?
The view we're looking at right here, is this looking south?
You'd be standing on Connor's sidewalk.
The reverse view would be the courthouse.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good, so those are the pricey apartments.
I'm sorry?
Those are the pricey apartments, eh?
You know, there's not a bad apartment in this project, honestly. I mean that. If you look at the courtyard, either you have a downtown view, this project, really, I encourage you all to look at other projects in central Indiana and that are downtown to this level. I mean, Noblesville has its own vibrancy and energy, and the fact that you could live downtown and either overlook the courthouse or river view, or on the other side to have the courtyard, this is a 6,000-square-foot elevated courtyard in the middle of downtown. I mean, it's really something special.
I think the only other comment I would have is, I'm not sure why, I understand you had conversation with somebody that recommended it, but the top floor seems a little barren and out of place, you know? But I'm not here to design your building for you.
Yeah, I mean, it's a difficult balance to meet between trying to, do you bring the roof line down with the cornice on the fourth floor? We've looked at a lot of buildings, and as always, as I've said all along, we're certainly open to feedback, and have sat down and are willing to sit down if there are other ways that the council together would like to recommend that we explore options. We're open to that.
I just don't understand why we have to bring the roof line down, but that's a whole 'nother conversation, I'm sure.
Questions, Mr. Hampton?
President, just to follow up on that, is you're thinking for the different shade or different color at the top, is that... or different color at the top, is that simply to soften where it looks more like sky or what?
Yeah, correct. It's meant to, essentially, your eyes drawn to the fourth-floor cornice, the fifth floor starts to fade into the skyline a little bit more, and that includes views, not just, I mean ultimately, if you're at the streetscape, you're probably not even going to see the fifth floor the way that the building height with the fourth-level cornice is. So it's more about the further elevation of just trying to reduce the perceived scale.
To look at the two, the same building from the north and the south, it's drastically different as far as the amount of brick that...
So if you mean like in the courtyard area?
Yeah, the courtyard's a lot, there's a lot of white there.
Yeah, so that's a fiber cement board. It's a lower-cost exterior product, and that allows us to really focus attention on the areas that folks will see. It's very unlikely, certainly not from the street, but you're just not going to see as much of that the way the courtyard is tucked in and the depth of the courtyard. So it's really about focusing our attention with the really cool exterior brick and detail on the exterior where folks are going to mostly see it.
Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. Although I can't see, this is like we're talking on the phone. I do want to comment, the design process doesn't always follow the development process, and I really appreciate what we saw three months ago. I didn't see it sitting on the other side of the table, but I do appreciate how far you've come with this and where you were at with your architect before. I think this has come a long way, and I would encourage you to keep going. I think a lot of the gestures, you really started to address the streetscape, you really started to address the fifth floor being lighter, so the scale comes down. I would encourage a little more horizontal lines to this. I think some of the language you've used, we've kind of used it wrong, but I know where you're at in this process, the arches don't match the arches and so on. But, and I appreciate that you're looking at it from the alley side and starting to really listen to what people have said to you, and I think it's come a long way. It's got a little farther to go. I think some of the points we brought up tonight, just keep going. Thank you.
Comments? Mr. Taylor?
I guess my comment would be that it depends on where do you want to see how tall this building really is with the fifth floor, or do you want to soften it? And I, that's a million-dollar question. I mean, would I like it brick all the way up? That's, that's great, but again, if you, if you take that fifth floor with all brick, you're really exposing that whole building. I mean, I'd be open for suggestions, but I just don't know how you get that fifth floor to blend in unless you completely expose it to brick.
I can comment, I don't, I don't think we want to design it in a public meeting, but I do think they're starting to, it's lighter, it's a different color, it needs to be a little more, it's still massive, it's an Eiffel's wall right now, but starting to become lighter, and some of the elements that we saw from Mr. Cole with the lighter cornices, the more detailed work, and you can even look at our courthouse, you know, all that above a certain story is all styrofoam. That was part of the remodel, and that's the same thing we're doing here. And I think it's starting to get, it is starting to feel lighter, and I think this is the right approach to bring the scale down. That was a comment we heard over and over again.
Additional comments? Mr. O'Connor?
I would just say, I can't see Shelby here, but, oh, there he is. Yeah, I would echo Mr. Peterson's comments. I think this is moving in the right direction, trying to accommodate the whole scale concern, and yet there may be some additional detail that can be on that fifth floor that might break that up a bit, but not being an architect and not being ready to try to redesign something in a public meeting, that's difficult. But this, I think this is moving in the right direction. You've incorporated a lot of the things that we saw in the existing buildings that were there, the diamond patterns, limestone, I mean, so you're trying to make it as authentic as you can based on what was there historically, so I would agree, keep moving.
Yeah, and one thing you cannot see, the level of detail is the brick will have what's called a rawhide finish, which has a little more of a texture, authentic texture and color and variation in color. Here, you know, it looks a little more consistent than it will in application. Really excited about the brick sample and color and think that it will fit well. We did a lot of studies of existing buildings in that area adjacent to, and this color complements well. And that's reflected, you can see, I mean, there's only a few samples here, but the brick sample here shows a lot of texture. I would encourage you to take a closer look when you have time. A lot of texture and, you know, compared with the limestone and the black storefront frames, just a really classic look. Some of the inspiration as we started to evolve our design, if you look at the old Noblesville Boys and Girls Club, you kind of see that feel, and that's what we studied and thought, you know, that has a really nice, classic, timeless look to it, and that's what we feel like we've achieved, achieved here. This is going to be an iconic structure, and I really am proud that our architects were able to pull back the reins a little bit because it can still be understated but incredibly iconic and beautiful. I think that's what they've done here.
Additional comments?
I'll just note for the public, what we're doing here is what we call first look for the proposed development presentation. This will go then back through the process, through the planning commission, and come back before us. So this is, this is by no means a final product, and again, I appreciate that effort you've taken. I know you've met with different groups, the Preservation Alliance and others several times, and I echo with what many have said, that I appreciate the steps you've taken. I think there's some, there's ways to go, and we have some time to get that done. So, thank you very much, Mr. Bowen, I appreciate it. I do have a member of the public who would like to speak, Ms. Charleboy, if you'd like to come forward at this point in time, I might have butchered her last name, I apologize, I tried to sound sophisticated there. So if you'd just come on up here and if you'll just state your name and your address for the record, and then you'll, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, yeah. Leslie Charleboy, 15178 Red Cliff Drive here in Noblesville. I just ran across a brochure, a digital brochure back a couple of years ago that Mr. Bowen had did, and I wanted to see if this kind of concept had been entertained for the Noblesville project. I have several copies here if you'd like to see. May I?
Yeah, please, please. I think we'll pass it around here too. If you want to give one to the clerk down there too, she'll make sure. Thank you. Thank you. That's okay. Oh.
More fitting for us to work downtown, and they didn't have to have been entertained.
You might be able to put one on the projector too. I think you can put one on the...
You should be able to put one on the projector down there too when you speak. There, just to your right.
Add it right on there.
There you go, perfect, yep.
Oh, my apologies.
There we go.
There we go.
You're smoother than that than a lot of people, I was going to...
I really don't have any more comments, just to see if this kind of concept has been entertained for the historic downtown. Again, this was one of Mr. Bowen's project or proposal, if he has anything more to say on that, but it was back just two years ago. So again, I just think something like this would be more fitting for the historic downtown, so.
Thanks for sharing that with us.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, this is, this is a cool project. So the architect for this was the same architect that designed Carmel Old Town Shops on Main Street and Range Line Road. Did a wonderful job. In this location, this project did not happen, but they didn't have any downtown, literally, there were no buildings. And so this was an attempt to try to create or manufacture a downtown, much like, you know, that was a little bit of the design in Carmel and other places who didn't have what Noblesville already has. I do love this look and think that this project would look great in a lot of places. This is also about 1/8 the size of the project we're looking at here, and so as we started to explore that variation of facades, it just started to look really forced, and it started to look like things that you already see maybe in other communities in central Indiana.
And some of your walking orders were to not look like that, right?
Yeah, but we did explore, you know, occasionally people would say, hey, can you do a multiple facade and do some things? So we looked at that, but again, it started to look like we were really trying to force an old downtown look as opposed to it's already here, we just needed to try to fit in as best we could and feel like we've done that.
Thank you, and thank you again for sharing with us. Appreciate it. Mr. Peterson?
Quick comment. One of the things too is the rendering technique you use for the Noblesville project versus this rendering technique. A lot of times if you draw in trees and balloons and kids with balloons and bicycles, it helps your rendering as well. And so I think, I appreciate, I appreciate that you, you use the context, the photos in your presentation were photos, photoshopped in from downtown Noblesville, and that you didn't, I mean, this is a beautiful rendering, but you didn't cheat and draw in balloons and bicycles. Thank you.
Make it Disney World?
Disney World.
Additional comments? Seeing none, we'll look forward to this continuing to go through the process tonight. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move along to miscellaneous number one. Council to consider approval of the 2019 agreement between the City of Noblesville and Firefighters Local 4416. Mr. Cook?
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President.
Good evening.
Did I say good morning?
Yeah.
It's been a long day. Okay, so you have before you the agreement with the IAFF Local 4416, and I believe it's been highlighted, the changes that were incorporated into this, so it should be pretty quick for, for you to glance through what was changed. This was approved by Board of Works this morning. All the financial impacts were incorporated into the already-approved 2019 budget. I'm happy to go through any of those changes, but I would request that we could suspend the rules this evening and pass this on a first reading.
We're going to suspend the rules on this one.
Yeah, we're going to go on time anyways.
Excellent.
All right. We have, yeah, okay. Any comments or questions of Mr. Cook? Seeing none, this will be, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles?
I would make a motion that we approve miscellaneous item number one, the 2019 agreement between the City of Noblesville and the Firefighters Local 4416.
Second.
Moving to second, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Nine to zero, thank you very much. Moving along, miscellaneous number three, council to consider resolution RC-23-18, a confirmatory resolution designated an economic revitalization area for Effing Properties LLC Applied Intelligence Corporation. Judy Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of council. I'm going to change this out. I'll explain that in a second. This agenda item is a request for a confirmatory resolution approval to establish an economic revitalization area as well as request, a request by Effing Properties LLC, which is also referred to as Applied Intelligence Corporation, for approval of a three-year real property tax phase-in. The request for designation of an ERA is for the approximate nine acres located on the northwest, this area right here, parcel at the intersection of Pleasant Street and Union Chapel Road. So this is Pleasant Street, Union Chapel would run up here. Applied Intelligence Corporation is an electrical engineering service provider currently located in Indianapolis. They hope to call Noblesville home to their new corporate headquarters, a $1 million, 12,000-square-foot facility. They have requested a three-year real property tax phase-in as modeled in your packet. AIC currently employs 10 with an average annual wage of $75,000 with benefits, and they anticipate hiring three new employees within five years. This project comes to you with a favorable recommendation from both the Council Economic Development Committee and the Council Finance Committee. In the chambers tonight is Gabe Effing, president of AIC, Effing Properties LLC, and he's here to answer any questions that you might have about this project.
At this point in time, do we have any questions of Ms. Johnson or Mr. Effing?
Mr. O'Connor? Just want to, how much is there room, I'm looking at this sideways, how much room do you have for expansion?
Actually...
Other way.
I don't know how to pull it out.
Turn around again.
I don't know how to...
Keep going, keep going. Turn it again.
This way?
Keep going, keep going. Half a watt. There.
So if I go over, you can see the full parcel of this.
Yeah, I see the optional expansion. How many additional square feet can you expand? What is that? I can't read.
Mr. Effing, do you want to come forward? You just state your name and address for the record too, Gabe, thanks.
Sure. Gabe Effing, 1049 South Ninth Street, Noblesville, Indiana. So approximately, we don't have all the details worked out yet, these are just kind of rough estimates. So I think we could expand another, you know, six to eight thousand square feet pretty easily, just from that lot, that location. Since it is kind of a narrow property, you know, by the time we do drainage, detention ponds, and setbacks, you know, there's, there's kind of a limitation on that lot of how big we can go, but as far as our company, you know, we've been around since 85, we think that that, that kind of square footage should be good for the next ten years or so.
Thanks.
Sure.
No questions of Mr. Effing? Seeing none, this is a matter for a public hearing, so at this point in time, I'll open the public hearing for RC-23-18. Ms. Wiles?
Seeing no one come forward for the public hearing, I would make a motion that we close that public hearing for RC-23-18.
Second.
Moving to second, I close the public hearing. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Nine to zero, thank you very much. We have a motion to approve.
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles?
I would make a motion that we approve Resolution RC-23-18.
Second.
Moving to second, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Nine to zero, thank you very much. Thank you for your investment, Mr. Effing. Moving along to miscellaneous number four, council to consider Resolution RC-24-18, a preliminary resolution designated an economic development, economic revitalization area for Rockstone Investments LLC and establishing a public hearing. Ms. Johnson?
Is it Rockstone?
I might as well say this.
Is it?
Rockstone.
Okay. This agenda item is a request for a preliminary resolution approval to establish an economic revitalization area as well as a request by Rockstone Investments LLC for approval of a five-year real property tax phase-in.
Any questions of Ms. Johnson?
This request for designation of an ERA is for the property at 15270 Endeavor Drive, Lot 7R, and also at 0 Endeavor Drive, Lot 20, right here. Rockstone Investments is planning to build a business campus consisting of four buildings as shown on display. Rockstone Investments is the parent company of Bedrock Builders, and Bedrock Builders will construct the first building as their new corporate headquarters. The other three buildings will be speculative builds. Two of the buildings will be a minimum of 6,800 square feet and the other two, a minimum of 8,700 square feet. Their goal is to attract small businesses and/or the entrepreneurial-type businesses to Noblesville with this campus. Across the street on Endeavor, as seen right here, Rockstone Investments will build a 17,000-square-foot warehouse facility. Bedrock Builders is a premier custom home builder in the Indianapolis area. In Noblesville, they have built homes in Sagamore, Park Place at Sagamore, Lock Haven, and Stony Creek Estates. Rockstone Investments' real property investment will be $4.3 million. Overall square footage in this project is 48,000 square feet. They have requested a five-year real property tax phase-in as modeled in your packet. Bedrock Builders currently employs 10 people and anticipates hiring two new employees within five years. This resolution states that Rockstone Investments is required to pull building permits before June 30th of 2020. If a building permit has not been submitted for any of the five buildings for the project on or before that date, then such building or buildings shall only be eligible for the tax phase-in upon further approval of this body. This project comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Council Economic Development Committee as well as the Council Finance Committee. And in the chambers tonight are Steve Ball and Dan Wolf, co-owners of Rockstone Investments and Bedrock Builders, and also Steve Harden of Fagri Baker Daniels representing his clients, and they also are here and glad to... And they also are here and glad to answer any questions that you have about their project.
Comments or questions regarding this project, Ms. Johnson or the developer, Mr. Boyce?
So, can you put that back down?
Yes, this one here, okay.
I see that they are all the same size, so it really doesn't matter, but I'm just curious, do you know which one you're planning on utilizing for corporate headquarters, and which ones are going to be speculative?
Come on up here, and, yeah, thanks. Come on down. Say your name and address for the...
Good evening, Steve Ball, 14701 Cumberland Road in Noblesville. We anticipate, they're not actually all the same size, the two in the back...
Oh, they're not? Okay.
Two in the back are slightly larger.
Okay, yeah, 86, is that 6,800 then for the two front ones?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
That includes the second story as well. So, we anticipate, over here, this will be the first one. That'll be our corporate headquarters, and we'll probably do this one speculative, probably do those together almost simultaneously.
Okay.
And then, we're actually beginning conversations, somebody on this building back here, so.
Additional questions or comments? Mr. O'Connor?
I know we've got the June 30, 2020 deadline date in there, but what's your anticipated start time?
So, on our building and the storage building across the street, we'd like to see both those complete in 2019. We'll go ahead and start the speculative building shortly thereafter, so I don't know that that would complete next year, but it should be under construction, well under construction. And then, like I said, we were already talking with somebody about this building back here, so that really just leaves, if we can procure that, then we're really just down to one building out of five.
Very good, thank you.
Additional comments? I'll just say, I know some of us have heard about this project for some time, and I appreciate you working with our economic development staff to make sure that we have protections available for us going forward. We appreciate the speculative space, but we also want to ensure our investment going forward, too. So, I know that's very important to this council, that we protect the tax dollars that we're using here going forward. So, thank you for willingness to work within that.
Absolutely, understood.
Appreciate it. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Mr. O'Connor?
I make a motion to approve Resolution RC-24-18, and establishing a public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Nine to zero, thank you very much. Moving on, miscellaneous number five. Counsel to consider Resolution RC-25-18, a preliminary resolution designated an economic revitalization area for Gaylor Real Estate of Noblesville LLC, and establishing a public hearing. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This agenda item is a request for a preliminary resolution approval to establish an economic revitalization area, as well as a request by Gaylor Real Estate of Noblesville for approval of a 10-year real property tax phase-in and a two-year personal property tax phase-in. The request for designation of an ERA is for the four-acre property at 17230 Craft Court in the Pleasant Street Commercial Park, Lot 12. That would be right here. Gaylor Electric is an electrical design-build contractor who offers high-quality electrical services to many market sectors. Gaylor has been in Noblesville for 10 years and is 34 years old corporately. They'd like to expand their Noblesville location by building a new 49,000-square-foot building, thus creating a Gaylor Business Campus with two buildings whose combined square footage will be over 100,000 square feet. Gaylor will invest $4,232,000 on real property and $175,000 on new personal property. They have requested a 10-year real property tax phase-in as modeled in your packet, and a two-year personal property tax phase-in also modeled in your packet. Gaylor currently employs 93 in Noblesville and anticipates hiring 20 new employees within five years. This project is not only about a new large investment by an existing Noblesville business taxpayer, who will employ approximately 113 employees. It's also about an existing business community partner. Gaylor gives back to our community through its workforce and community development efforts and involvement. They make it their mission to help Noblesville's at-risk youth. They help them to skill up their trade that results in them having a better quality of life. Gaylor Noblesville has a great story to tell and to show you about creating a workforce development model. I'm sure they would welcome you to tour their facility if you have not already done so. Staff at Gaylor are also very involved in our community events, sponsorships, and more. This project comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Council Economic Development Committee. In the chambers tonight is Jim Cruz, CFO of Gaylor Electric, and he is also here and glad to answer any further questions that you may have about Gaylor's expansion.
Questions of Ms. Johnson before Mr. Cruz speaks?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor?
Seeing that I am involved with a company from a commercial banking perspective, I believe it'd be appropriate for me to recuse myself with respect to this item, but I wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, Mr. Cruz? Would you like to say anything, or just ready to field any questions?
I'm ready to field any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Cruz?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hampton?
The number of the 20 jobs created, what's the basis for that number? Could it be more than that, I guess, is where I'm...
It definitely can be more than that. This is a prefabrication facility that we're building, and initially, we've got currently 23 people in the current building that are doing that, and we anticipate that additional 20 very soon, and it could grow significantly more than that. Effectively, this will be a electrical construction inside of a building instead of doing it on the job site, which will save a lot of time and efficiency.
Follow-up, there's a lot of talk these days about workforce development. How tough are these jobs to fill?
That's exactly why we're doing this, because we can build electrical construction components, ship them to the job site, and then install them. Electrical journeymen are difficult to find, and this will allow us to do a lot of that with people who are less skilled, but still have the ability to perform this work.
We have a Chuck today, Mr. Gridrich. Chuck.
Representative.
Representative Gridrich. He said he could hire 250. That may be all of Gaylor, but 250 people if you can find them. But of all folks, they're doing something about improving workforce for their company, but it's a challenge, as we all know.
Ms. Wiles?
To echo on the mayor's comments, that what Gaylor Electric is doing is they're going out and creating programs, and actually have created a private school within their organization so that they are being able to bring students in who maybe aren't the traditional high school students, but introduce them to these skilled trades, give them an opportunity to be able to have hands-on experience and to learn those trades, and then graduate high school and be able to go off and get a position in this industry without incurring any of the student debt. And so, I think that part of this facility also is to be able to expand upon that whole program and to continue to really address some of our workforce development training needs. So, Representative Gaylor is very passionate about helping to move things forward to...
Representative Gridrich.
Oh, my gosh, yes, Gridrich.
He probably didn't put that in there. He probably didn't call me the one.
Yes, I could.
Good, thank you.
So, yeah, it's very impressive, and if you have an opportunity to go out, then it'll be exciting to see the impact of this facility.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
It's all moved.
Can't get it, can't do that.
I thought how miscellaneous we could.
No, you got to read RC.
Motion to approve miscellaneous number five. Counsel to consider Resolution RC-25-18, a preliminary resolution designated an economic revitalization area for Gaylor Real Estate of Noblesville.
Second. That's over the top. All right. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those standing, eight to one, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Eight, zero, and one abstentions, sorry, I misspoke. Moving on, miscellaneous number six. Counsel to consider appointments to the Redevelopment Commission.
This is a yearly appointment. The council has two appointments to the Redevelopment Commission. They are for the calendar year of 2019. Jack Martin and Mike Field have served as council's appointments for many years, and they are willing to continue if you would like.
Comments or questions about that? Ms. Wiles?
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve the council appointments to the Redevelopment Commission of Jack Martin and Mike Field, and thank them for their service on that commission.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Nine to zero, thank you very much, gentlemen. Moving on, miscellaneous number seven. Gentlemen who are serving.
I knew it.
I was thanking the Mr. Field and Mr. Martin. Miscellaneous number seven. Counsel to consider appointments to the Facade Grant Review Committee. It's getting late, all right. Ms. Lees?
Here we go again. The council also has appointments to the Facade Grant Review Committee. We are doing a little housekeeping, a little catch-up work here. There was some staff turnover in the Economic Development Department that handles the facade grant program, and there was staff turnover on my side of the hallway, and somewhere, these appointments fell through the cracks. But the review committee kept doing its work, and as anyone who's been downtown can see, they've done a very good job. So, John Adams was originally appointed by the council. He's just kept serving. It's supposed to be a two-year term, but he's still serving and doing an excellent job. The council originally appointed Chris Owens when he was Director of Main Street. When he stepped down and when Lorna Steele replaced him, she just stepped into the committee. Nobody knew any better. She's doing a great job, and she would like to continue serving. So, just to get our paperwork in order, ask that you would appoint these two.
Additional comments or questions or a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve the appointments to the Facade Grant Review Committee as submitted by the clerk.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Nine to zero, thank you both for your service, continued service.
Yes.
Lorna.
Taking Steele and...
Ms. Steele and Mr. Adams.
Mr. Adams.
Yes. All right, moving right along here. Transfer number one. Counsel to consider transfer TA-14-18A through G, fiscally-neutral appropriation transfers in multiple funds resolve projected gaps between actual spending and department budgets for 2018. Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, Controller, and last but not least, a whole group of appropriation transfer resolutions, and as referenced in the agenda, there are actually seven individual resolutions here, but they do represent a cohesive set of actions across seven different funds, and that's the reason for the numbering structure and the way we're presenting it. And while I guess one could say what you have before you is a somewhat unique set of transfers, it's all really actually very benign, and it's a discussion that we've had ongoing in the Finance Committee, and we've talked about a bit here, and it's, again, a consequence of the accounting modernization, chart of accounts restructuring that we've done. And really, what this is doing is a year-end cleanup of moving appropriations within these seven different funds, all to the proper places, so that we've got all the expenses accounted for in the right place, and now we're moving the appropriation associated with those expenses so that things are all, you know, in order. And the real purpose of all of this is to have ourselves set up so that going forward, we'll have good year-over-year comparables, and consequently, you're unlikely to see a group of seven transfer resolutions like this at any point in the future. But it's a really a year-end cleanup thing, and if folks have any questions about any or all of these, I'm here, ready to answer.
Questions of Mr. Spalding on these fiscally-neutral appropriations? Mr. O'Connor?
I would make a motion that we approve transfers TA-14-18A through G as submitted.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Nine to zero, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Counsel comments?
Merry Christmas to everyone.
Wish you all, Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays, whatever holiday.
Thank you very much for bearing with us and to the public as well.
Thank you for your service, Mr. President.
My pleasure, as always. At this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. It's moved in second. All those in favor, say aye. I oppose, same sign. Merry Christmas.